...but to think that she was up to no good. Also, real quickly, obviously, some of you guys aren't aware of some of this stuff, but that property sits directly on top of the Paleo Channel, which is Wycomico County's only clean source of water. Recent studies, the Wycomico River, the county's named after, recent tests, the highest levels of contamination ever recorded, okay? That stuff goes right into the river. Our former mayor, much of the river's troubles can be attributed to decades of civic indifference. Only recently have government officials begun treating the river as something other than a sewer. Until the county executive comes in and really won't give us the time of day and treats us in such a way that you get the feeling that, almost out of spite, she's gonna ax the park and turn it into the worst possible thing. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Collier Purnell, resident of Wycomico County and Shadow Hills. And not with prepared statements, but just things that have really caused me great concern and been disheartening. And I think one of the things is just what was just stated in talking about rumors and things being done for spite. The gentle lady talked about all the trash that was in the back and that no one from Shadow Hills had cleaned any of that. When the truth is, we're not allowed to go back there. We would be arrested, and there had been attempts to have us arrested. We go through McKell's yard and peek as far as we can, but we would certainly do more as the residents have done over the years. And talk about spite. And when Mike talked about, he was almost arrested based on Julie Giordano's assertion that he was unallowed to be back there. But let me tell you this, the first time that you saw me and that I came in and spoke and left, I saw Julie. And I just wanted to ask her, what gave her the right to say, without knowing us, that we were entitled, self-centered, arrogant, and live in a rundown neighborhood? And Mike came in and talked with her a little bit later. But imagine how surprised I was to get a call the next day that our county executive had contacted Salisbury Police Department and asked them to pull the cameras because she thought one of us hit her. You talk about an abuse of power and a lack of decorum. You saw it in here. And I'll tell you, there's one group who has not raised their voice, who has not been disrespectful, who has not shown any disdain to this sacred body, and that is the residents of Wycomico County and the residents of Shadow Hills. We implore you, county council, to please investigate this. Do all that is within your power to right this wrong. We have nothing, as everyone has stated, against Mr. Hoffman. I'm so glad that you stated your correct residence in December. I'm very attentive. It was Wycomico County, when it's Worcester County. But we have nothing against you. And even if anything has been stated that you think has been exaggerated, we pulled our facts from Facebook. We pulled our numbers from what we saw on the overview. But we have nothing against you as a person or even your business. We just want what was promised to us and what is best for all of Wycomico County. Council, thank you for your time, your attention, and, most importantly, your service.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Hi there. My name is James Doleen. I live in Shadow Lane, Delmar. There was one comment about the trash pickup that we're not found back there picking up trash. We're not supposed to be back there. I'm not going back there if it's trespassing. I'm a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout. I'm not gonna go back there if it's trespassing. You know, what I will do is pick up trash around my community. And I've done it. I've picked up hundreds of pounds, up to thousands of pounds, as a group. And I'm gonna continue to do it. And so, just hearing those comments was upsetting. And I'm picking up trash before I hear those type of comments. I'm doing that for myself. I'm doing that for the community. Also, I'd like to ask the council, the executive, anyone, let's get some funding back on the table for Connolly Mill Park in any which way you can. I'm not sure exactly how. But I'd like you guys to hear that and consider that. I'm not sure if it was inappropriate time to ask about line item number 60 on the budget a little earlier, but I think that was Parks and Rec or something. No one came to speak about that, but hey, maybe some of that funding could be for Connolly Mill Park. Yeah, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I did wanna say, what do you think? Bob Harris from Pittsfield, Maryland. I have to agree with you guys in one respect on this, okay? There is really no reason that that can't be open to you guys to use, okay? You can walk back there, you can do it safely. Does it mean you have to go into the borrow pit? Nope, because that's a bad place. I mean, that water's like 60 feet deep and it's mud on the bottom. If a kid ever gets in there and they get their legs stuck in it, they'd never get to the surface. But back there, there are paths. There are trails, okay? This isn't like rocket science here, guys. Everybody can work together on this. Point your fingers, it's time for the past. You gotta let it go and move forward. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I just wanna say, my name is Vicky Harris. I'm Bob's wife, and I'm a Wycomico County resident. And I was at the Safari at the Quarry, and I enjoyed it. And it's all about making memories. So I'm gonna play this for ya.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name's Teresa Anders. I'm not a resident of this county, but I worked in this county for 12 years as a nurse. I drove back and forth. I still am a nurse for 25 years. It's extremely stressful, and we're extremely short-staffed, but that's not what I wanna talk about. I wanna talk about what helps me. No meds, no antidepressants. What helps me is off-roading. I found that outlet years ago, and I've known Brad for about seven years, and he's always helped me. I make driftwood art and I sell it at Jeep events. It's an outlet for me, because I like being a nurse and I like giving to the community. I think to take all this negative, negative back and forth and just make it into a park that everybody can enjoy. I'm a Girl Scout. I like to camp. Most Jeepers pick up trash, they camp, they hike. They don't wanna hurt the environment. I belong to tread lightly. And they work on keeping trails clean and helping coexist with the environment. And I think this park with 274 or 200 and so many acres, I think it could be shared jointly. A park that big with the dangers of the water and the kids, maybe that part of the park could just be off-road. And the other part could be for the community that obviously got bamboozled out of a park. And if I lived there, I would feel bad, too. I'm just proposing a coexist idea to make both parties happy, to make the residents happy and to let off-roaders or dirt bikes or the other people that mention things, maybe BMX bikes. They're such a good opportunity, and it's people who are into those types of things, like my daughter. I raised her changing oil. She's a car enthusiast. She's also a pharmacy tech at a hospital. But when the kids are involved in those types of things, they spend their money there and they're not in trouble. And it could be a good thing. It could be a good mix if you combine it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've seen none. Council comments? Shane?
Yes. I'd like to...
Did you say Shane or Shani?
It's up to you. Y'all fight it out.
Ladies first.
Y'all fight it out.
Ladies first, Shane.
The gentleman from, Mr. Campbell from the Eastern Shore undercover. I finally met who you are. I want to say that I do agree with you. And one of the things I want to say, you have to love people. Me, our elected official, I'm sitting here because I love people.
And me.
Yeah, and you. I love people, otherwise I wouldn't do it. I have projects I like to see done. That's why I came back to politics. You have to love people. You have to be caring. You have to be respectful. When you're elected official, you not only represent district, I represent District One, the minority district. However, I represent the whole county. It's not limited to the county council. I represent Byvale. I represent Pittsfield. If somebody from Pittsfield calls me today and tells me to go check something, I'll be right down there. I went to Byvale the other week to look at something. You have to love people and you have to respect each other. You're gonna disagree with issues. All that had to be done is just something simple. Communication. Bring the community that's gonna be disrupted, if it's gonna be disrupted, together. Educate the people on the event. Those kind of things you need to do before you sign something on the dotted line. Bring it before the council. Get our blessing. Bring it to a work session. Have a public hearing. If those things were done, some of the misinformation would not have gotten out. We wouldn't have to hear about it on Facebook. I don't do politics on Facebook. I talk about my grandchildren and birthdays and stuff. Don't do things on social media before you even talk to us or the community you represent. You don't attack people. You don't accuse them of harassment. Those are the kind of things that the neighborhood heard. You don't call someone to cry when she's never been talked to a certain way. You sit down and you take your medicine and be strong when somebody's talking against you. I had to endure it with a blogger when I was on the city council. I just sat there and smiled. And after the meeting, I go up to him, I said, "So-and-so, so-and-so, you didn't show me with my Heineken and my Absolut." He put me on blog with the Absolut. And I joke about it. But the thing of it is, you have to be thick-skinned, that's what I'm trying to say, when you're in this position. And you can't be vindictive. You can't say, "It's my way or the highway." You have to be respectful. I apologize personally to Mr. Hoffman because he was put in a position when he didn't have to be put in there. I apologize for the condition that the place was found. Trash, that should've been prepared for the event since you wanted the event, you were promoting it. The county, I'm talking about the county executive was promoting. She should've made sure that no one had to pick up trash. But the bottom line is respecting, caring, and loving people, not yourself. Loving people. I don't have anything against County Executive Giordano. I don't have a thing about it, but I just have a problem with, it's either her way or no way. And that's not how you work in the county government. That's all I have to say.
My turn now?
Yeah.
All right. So, the way I see it, this wasn't about the Safari at the Quarry. This was about the rollout. I sat here two months ago and said, "This could've been a great event." I said it on record. Then I said, "I can't support it," because the community was terrified. They didn't know how many events it was gonna be. They didn't know if it was gonna turn into motorcycles, four-wheelers, what was gonna happen. They weren't getting the input that they needed, and they were scared. And we started getting more and more text messages, phone calls, Facebook messages, and I'm gonna back the community. They didn't want it. So, that being said, Bob Harris and Bob and I talk on occasion, and Mr. Earl Campbell come up here tonight and said, "Look, you guys have gotta start working with the council. You've gotta start working with the council." Now, that being said, Bob and I have had many disagreements, many. I can't get up because he's in this room and go back there and watch this on PAC-14. I gotta face Bob, no matter how tough it gets. Mr. Campbell back there, I look at his Eastern Shore undercover, and sometimes he has some things to say about the council that's not very nice. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not. I said, "Maybe it's true, maybe it's not." I don't get to run back here and watch it on PAC-14. The county executive, in my opinion, as a leader, she's representing this Jeep club, the Safari of the Quarry. You guys are hearing from people that it's no good, we shouldn't have had it, it's ruining our community. Where's she at? She's sitting in her office, watching it on PAC-14. Now, she represents all of you. She's the executive of Wycomico County. But she should be in here representing all of you and listening to your concerns, because this is the one place that all citizens get to go up to that podium and speak to us, to PAC-14, and the county executive. She blew in here, she made her statement, and she blew out while you guys were sitting here, left to get up here and fend for yourselves. I will apologize, too, Mr. Hoffman. You went through a lot, and so did we, so did everybody. This could have been, it could have been a good event. The rollout was terrible. It was terrible. And here we are. Now, we gotta deal with it. Oh, you're here?
I heard every word.
Okay, well, come on in.
Yeah, but it wasn't a lot of seats.
Her turn to talk. Over with.
So, my point is, and I'm not finished, I reached out to Mr. Campbell, I think it was yesterday evening. Now, even though, I'm sure we've had our differences, I don't know Mr. Campbell, but things I've seen him post and things he's probably seen me post, but we said on the phone, "Let's set our differences aside. Let's meet, see what we can agree with, and meet each other." It was very civil, no problems, no issues. He thanked me for calling, I thanked him for taking my call, and we're gonna meet. That's what you have to do. Now, it might be a little uncomfortable for me because of some of the things I've seen on his posts, and it might be a little uncomfortable for him. But we gotta work through this uncomfortableness. We're in positions where we've got to, gotta talk it out. Can't walk away, can't hide. And that's just where I'm at. You know, I agree with the whole thing, working together, but when you have somebody that won't stay and won't talk and won't communicate and they won't listen to a body of people, how am I supposed to work with that? That's all I got to say.
Joe. First of all, thanks, everybody for being here. I wanna address some things that were said tonight. First off, in 1977, I was at a music festival in Virginia when I was witnessing these guys with these 1,400 tires on these Chevy pickups and Broncos. And I came back to the Eastern Shore, and I said, "I gotta have those." So I was mud hopping, deer hunting with 1,400s on a '71 Chevy pickup, a lot longer than some people in this room were alive. And in '79, I ended up with about a '73 CJ5 that, when you got it in the mud deep enough, it sounded like a Marine motor. And we used them to pull tractors out and whatever. So I'm not against four-wheeling. I'm a motorsports fan. I go to drag races, the stock car races, you know, tractor pulls. I heard Mr. Hoffman say a while ago at the podium, "You've been working on this for a year and a half." Correct? Yeah. Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure I read you right and I heard you correctly. I can't recall just exactly when we found out about this on Facebook and the Shadow Hills people found out, but I think it was sometime around September of last year. Am I correct? Yeah. So you had almost a year. You had almost a year of when this started to come into furtion there to let people know. You got dealt kind of a bad deal, I think, but I'm not gonna apologize to you because you signed a contract for 364 days, and as a businessman, I think you should've questioned that. I really do. I've not signed a lot of contracts in my life, but a 364-day contract would've sounded pretty fishy to me, right off the bat. It was set at the podium. You know, this violated the city zoning code. I don't know if you ever went to the city and tried to alleviate those issues or not. If you didn't, you should have. We're gonna have some legislation that I've asked to put forward, and believe me, I hate legislation. I look at what Maryland does every year during their legislative sessions, and I shake my head at all the new laws they put in. And if you go back the time I've been on the council, you can probably count on one hand or maybe two the number of times I've asked for legislation to be put forward. But in this case, we have to protect the citizens. And that's what this is about. It's about protecting the citizens. If this had been brought to the council, citizens would've had a chance to, and I see Julie shaking her head, "No," but that's fine. That's where I'm at. We have to protect the citizens. And it don't matter if it's Shadow Hills, it doesn't matter if it's Nutter's, it doesn't matter if it's the people that live in Pittsfield, or if it's the people that live on the West Side, you know? It don't matter if it's a Jeep event, it could be anything. Now, we've drawn this up. I had Mrs. Hurley draw this up and Mr. Benson draw this up to address motorsports specifically because that's the problem we're having right now. Now, unfortunately, hopefully, we don't have to, but we might have to add to it at some point in time if something else pops up that's not right. But we have to protect the citizens. And so, that's all I have for right now. We'll be talking about this in a little while. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments?
Yeah, it seems to me, one of the big problems is the park. It's not a park. It's, a lot of people are using it that shouldn't be using it, and they're causing a lot of problems. And that's part of the reason why this has erupted. I don't know if it's feasible, but it would be nice to, you know, a park that's in, not a park, because this isn't technically a park, but a piece of property that's in use by law-abiding citizens could prevent unlawful-abiding citizens to enter the property. So if you were, I'm just thinking out loud, because I can't make this decision on my own, but if the property was allowed for residents in the community to walk or access the property, I could see that preventing a lot of motorists that aren't even supposed to be on dirt bikes out there from using it. Maybe you will be allowed to pick up trash and keep it clean. And on the other hand, I think if that was to be allowed, then there would be some middle ground to where if a Jeep event wanted to happen on a weekend, that there could be some sort of ground where we could schedule it and put it in a schedule if it works out. Now, obviously, I think nobody here is upset about Jeepers. They're more upset about the motorists that aren't even supposed to be on the property, and they're causing a lot of problems. And I recognize that. And I see that if, and I'm repeating myself a little bit, but I see that if the residents were allowed to use the property that's in their own backyard, they'd be able to keep the illegal motorists out. And when time comes to allow a legal event that has guidelines to it, then maybe that would be acceptable. Other than that, you know, this has been a very educational night, and yeah, a lot of public comments, a lot of input. I've wrote, I've got everyone's name written down. John's over here shaking his head, stop flipping the paper. But your input was great, and I hope that we can make everyone happy in some sort of middle ground. I don't want to shut the door on one avenue, but I also don't want to not allow the residents to be able to use a piece of property that's in your backyard. I see the, and I'll finish this, but the state of Maryland has public land all over that's accessible. It's accessible. It's all over. You can go down 60-foot road, there's hundreds of thousands of acres all over the place, but you can't use it for motorized vehicles. Now, we have a particular piece of land that you could, as long as it's construed to what the county wants. Now, I don't agree with motorized motorcycles, dirt bikes, anything like that, you can really hurt yourself on, but to me personally, I don't see the issue with like a Jeep thing. Maybe the way it was handled wasn't the right way, right? But I don't wanna shut the door on this. But I do want to say all what I had to say. Anyway, I'll shut up. All right, Jeff?
Sure, you got three minutes left.
No, I'm good.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always important that we hear from everybody, whether it's stuff we agree with, stuff we don't agree with, your concerns. Like Shani said, we have to deal with it. We have to work through it, have discussion. With the budget process, I'm looking forward to working through that, and I'm confident that we will end up with an end product that will allow us to keep the county moving forward in a practical and financially responsible manner. Thanks to everybody up here and all the comments. My page and a half on Safari at the Quarry is now down to one paragraph. You know, we talked about lack of discussion, and I think that was the catalyst that got all this started. Had there been proper discussion with all the stakeholders in the very beginning, as opposed to a unilateral decision, I don't think we'd be sitting here, listening to almost two hours of comments about Safari and the Quarry. Hopefully, we can get past that. I did receive, over the past week and a half, over 100 emails, all in opposition of this event. Now, disclaimer here, they were all canned emails, but somebody took the time to send them, and if we're keeping statistics, I did not receive one email in support of the event. So, for those of you that are gonna go home and fill up my inbox tonight, it's too late, you missed your chance. The threats of arrest, wow. At 1:00 AM the night before the event, there were dirt bikes going through the quarry. I wonder if they were threatened with arrest. I'm pretty sure they weren't. Bottom line is, the property is unsecured and poses a liability risk if somebody gets injured or killed. The county's gonna be on the hook for a lawsuit. You can bet that will happen. The press release that came out, there was, said the hotel rooms were filled and the restaurants were packed, and that's true. They were. The parking lots were packed, but they were not packed with Jeeps. No offense. In the five hotels in North Salisbury, between 5:30 and 6:00 AM on Sunday morning, there was 12 Jeeps. The reason is, they were packed. There was a wrestling tournament at Civic Center that had 2,000 wrestlers there, plus their parents. And the reason I know that is I went by the Civic Center to take care of a meeting, and I saw all the cars parked in the parking lot over on Y-High and across Glen Avenue in the auxiliary parking lot, and I thought for a fleeting minute that early voting was being overwhelmed. But they weren't. It was a wrestling tournament. And there was a lacrosse game at SU with Christopher Newport. There was another event going on down at Crown Sports. So there was a lot going on this weekend, including the Jeep event. The trash in the property, the Jeep folks did not... The trash in the property, the Jeep folks did not put that trash down, the folks in Shadow Hills did not put that trash down. The trespassers put that trash down. And I thank you all for cleaning it up. Mr. Dallin, it's a pleasure working with you, cleaning up litter, you and your family, because we've been out there numerous hours and I appreciate your work on the 700 miles of road that we have in this county. I think, wow, man, I cut a whole lot of stuff out here.
I know, I want to go first.
There you go. You know, we talked about what's going on on social media. I think it's safe to say there's some very divisive rhetoric on social media and, you know, I'm not going to go on and on about it, but it's exactly the type of thing that we tell our kids not to do. It's called cyberbullying. Both sides, cut it out. You don't have something nice to say? Take your finger and keep scrolling. It's very easy. Share the good stuff. Share the fire department chicken dinners, the sports events. Share the good stuff. Keep the bad stuff to yourself. The trash in the county, I just want to shout out to Bruce Robson, Mark Engberg, and Craig Founts. They continue to push various groups of people forward all over the county. It seems like we're not making a difference, but we are, and I just wanted to give a shout out to them. And finally, I want to give a shout out to all of the election volunteers who worked early voting and will be working for the election on the 14th, the primary election. And that's all I got. You glad I didn't finish up with trash?
Quick note on that trash. It's a fun time if anybody ever wants us to join us. We did it, what was it, Saturday?
You haven't lived till you found a toilet.
I didn't find a toilet. But it was good camaraderie and we had a great time.
Josh?
Just, you're very quick. So, what I'm hearing tonight, you know, I think we need to get an idea, by the way, of how much soil is left on that property. You know, for the Jeep folks that are here, you know, you all are waking up to this issue. For the Shadow Hills community, to the community around that, we've been hearing, I mean, I've been hearing to them since I've been on the council, 2018 started hearing about this as running. 10 years before that, I started hearing about that issue when I worked for the local land trusts and we were working to preserve the property and the joining property. None of this issue is new, but for them, they went through a very, 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 very long iterative, tough process in order to try to get to a point where they could close up this situation. So, please understand that there, and by the way, Shadow Hills community folks, great, you know, just, I appreciate the integrity to which you all have interacted again and again, despite the fact of all of this going on. So, the quick things I think we need to do, let's find out exactly how much soil is left on this property and then let's start to get a master plan for this property in order to turn it over. When we voted five years ago to do this, it was literally, we're going to get that rest, less bit of soil, it's going to be good for the county, and then we're going to turn it into a park. That's the plan. Figured it would probably take seven-ish years, so we're about that time. So, let's start to get to the point where we can figure out how much soil is left and then, and then let's turn it into a park. Let's get the master plan together. So, other than that, I just want to say, I hope everyone, love your mothers, I hope everyone here is mother, have a great Mother's Day. Hi, Mom. Have you noticed? Cheers a lot.
Good plug.
I'd like to say, not to repeat too much of what's been said tonight, we really appreciate all the input and everybody taking the time to be here, but I will say, I agree. It wasn't so much about the event at all as it was about the process that everybody found so challenging during this whole time. As Joe said, it started with a 364-day MOU. Never heard of that before. And all that did was begin immediately to alienate this legislative body and worse, more so, to alienate the public as a whole. That's the reason that you don't have 364-day contracts is because you do want engagement from the full government body as well as the public. It's important. That's the democratic process. So, it didn't have to be this way, not at all. This isn't the first outdoor event we've ever done in Wycomico County. Mr. Steve Miller, he's the Director of Recreation and Parks and Tourism, he does this stuff day in and day out, and he does an excellent job with it. He seeks input from the community, he comes before the council, and he engages the public in everything he does. And I guarantee you, there's not one event that Mr. Miller has ever put on where there's been any, this type of a backlash from the community or concern from the council. So, I think takeaway is that I think the council and the community, for the most part, we'd just like to see us getting back to the processes that are in place and hopefully we'll have a more efficient government and we'll have a better community as a whole and we won't have to engage in such toxic atmosphere. Outside of that, the budget, we appreciate everybody coming and making the comments for that. The council's heard what you've said and we recognize your concerns as to whether or not it's education or public safety or the fire departments. The council recognizes this as well. We've looked at the budget, we certainly do recognize that there are many issues, areas that need to be tweaked. That's what we're going to be reviewing over the next week or two. In that, we'll take into consideration what was said tonight when we deliberate and we'll try to make sure that we can make every effort possible to request the increases and adjustments that were discussed tonight, as well as, you know, if we have to make some cuts, we'll make those cuts as well to be a more efficient, you know, operation. But all in all, it's what we'll do to make sure that everything that we do is in the best interest of the citizens and the county as a whole. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session followed by two closed sessions pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305 B3 and 9 as follows, to discuss the acquisition of real property for state's attorney and matters directly related to the acquisition, to protect the county's bargaining power and to conduct collective bargaining negotiations, to consider matters that relate to the negotiations and to protect the collective bargaining strategy.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Pose. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thanks for coming.
We're now reconvening as Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-10 for May 7, 2024.
Sit down.
The next item on the agenda we have is a open work session in reference to proposed legislation on the use of county property for outside motorsports events.
Oh, okay. All right.
Joe, I'll let you have the floor on this one.
Okay, thank you. Needless to say, all the events that's been going on in the past few months, unfortunately, like I said in council comments a few minutes ago, who wants new laws? But I think in this situation, we need to look at trying to protect the neighborhoods. This isn't about handcuffing any kind of events at all. Go back a little, a few years, the first Bike Week that took place in Wycomico County, they had Bike Week in Ocean City, Worcester County for a number of years, and then it finally migrated to Wycomico because we wanted a piece of the action, I guess you could call it. It took place at Winter Place Park. Well, there was some issues with one of the neighbors who had some horses, that the motorcycles were disturbing, and there were issues with neighbors along Route 346 where they exited from that park because that's where they brought them out at. So, after the second year, there were enough complaints, plus the Bike Week had grown, so they moved it to Shorebird Stadium, which was a good thing. So, we paid attention to what neighbors were saying back then. So, I think we need to pay attention to the concerns the neighbors had now. This is about motorsports events that make noise or that don't make noise, as far as that goes. It just basically gives the council an opportunity to review any kind of event like this, no matter what the timeline, because we had that opportunity if it took place over 365 days before. So, like I said earlier, it might come to a point where we have to expand this if our government doesn't respect the neighbors and the citizens of Wycomico County by informing them of what may be coming to their neighborhood. So, is there anything else I need to add to that for the council or have I covered it pretty well?
I, I'm just thinking for reoccurring events, just so if we have the, like the motorcycle thing at Civic Center each year, no, not Civic Center, at the Purdue Stadium each year, would we be getting this every year, the same thing?
I think we, most of the time, work on a yearly basis. Is that right? Or not? Do we need to do that every year or do we give a blanket certificate to it to happen for several years?
I was thinking an initial, something initial, like an initial approval, you know?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Do we need to do it so we do it every year or do we need to do it so we give a blanket, you know, okay for it to happen in the future?
I could maybe help with that possibly. The way that Steve Miller runs his operation, Steve knows what he's doing on a regular basis and I would think that, you know, at the beginning of a fiscal year, he could simply supply the council with a list of events that he is fully aware is going to be held over that next year, they're outdoor events. Steve knows what he's doing more than a year in advance and he could simply, you know, present that to the council, we give it our blessing, and then we move on.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the process is in place, probably make it very easy.
And by the way, Steve Miller wasn't involved in the Safari at the Quarry.
Yeah, understood.
Understood. Anyway.
I think that, like you had the wrestling match and you had the dog shows, that's planned events. We know they come a certain time of year, but if we do, but we're doing, but motorized, I still think we don't give them a blanket.
We're only talking about outside of that.
I'm talking about outside events. I think we still, if it's on county property, I think they still should come and let us know what's going on, because if we give them, well, you can have this year, you don't have to come back anymore, I think they're going to do what they want to do. You know what I mean? There shouldn't be no alcohol really on county property unless they get a special one-day liquor license or something. That's a rule. I know most one-day things. It's certain, should be certain things you can do on our property and I don't think we should give them a blanket. Because it hasn't been proven, you have to prove yourself, like to me, they had a good event this time, or whoever, but we still should have them come before us and let us know what's going on, on our property.
Maybe Mr. Benson would like to add to that.
The suggestion, the way this is written, is it amends an existing section of the county code. In Section E of 22-1, it adds the words license, permit, or contract. It already had the word lease in there. The reason the words license, permit, or contract have been added is because I know there's been some expression that the MOU that was entered into constitutes a lease without rendering, I've rendered an opinion to the council on that, without going into that. Rather, by adding the words license, permit, or contract, we in essence try to cover every single type of agreement that could possibly be entered into, so you don't have an argument about whether this happens to be a lease or whether it's a license or something else. So, the additions of those words is to try to cover every single type of agreement that can be entered into. The second change that's in that Paragraph 1 is simply, the current code references an old section and this is simply updating. It's not changing anything, it's simply changing the reference to the current code section. The last sentence is simply, you know, it's, we, the, there was a discussion about possibly changing, reducing the time period from one year to six months or, I've even heard the discussion that every single lease slash agreement should come to the county council for approval, but, I mean, I don't know how many leases, agreements the county enters into, but certainly it probably goes into the hundreds, if not thousands, in a year. Conceivably, if somebody wanted to rent a pavilion at a county park, they sign a, some sort of agreement, that could theoretically be required to be brought in if you had to have every agreement the county entered into. So, in recognition of the fact that there's a limit as to the time the council has, the effort here was to draft language that applied to outdoor events. The reason it says outdoor events is associated with motorized events is because the Civic Center has indoor motorized events and they're not going to be required to come in and get that. So, it's limited to outdoor events and then it's supposed to be any, you know, the language has been drafted in such a way to be as broad as possible that relates to any motorized event. There have been suggestions that we could, we could, again, have every agreement come in and then grant exceptions for certain types of things. There's no, you know, somebody could misuse this, it could be abused in some way. Somebody could decide to use an event that's not a motorized event that the neighborhood gets upset about, but that's a case-by-case situation. If it happens, you'll have to deal with it in the future. This is addressed to this particular type of event to make sure that in the future, if the county wants to enter into an agreement for an outdoor motorized event, regardless of the length, it's brought to the county council and therefore there's a public vetting of what's going to happen. This doesn't deny that. They could bring in another Jeep event for the same property after this is drafted. You guys could say it's a good idea and allow it. It just requires there to be, for the agreement to be brought to the council. So, the reason it's drafted this way, there is an existing code section, the existing code section dealt with leases and it dealt with leases for a year or more. The language that's added is to try to make that as broad as possible, so any type of agreement, this one's labeled an MOU, is that a lease, is it a license, is it a permit, whatever it is, it would have to come before the council and it limits it to outdoor motorized events.
Mr. Benson, go ahead, Shane.
Maybe I'm missing something, but why would we narrow ourselves down to just motorized events? For an example, if our executive says, okay, I can't have motorized events out there, I'm going to have a band come out there and play and play music. Why can't we, or can we, develop legislation that says, anything on unimproved county-owned property must go before the council so that we're covered A to Z? Because right now, it's just, it's a motorized thing where people are pissed.
You could change this. We were asked to draft a document that related to motorized events and that's what you have. You could modify this to be broader if you want to do that. That wasn't what we were tasked with doing. So, we were tasked with crafting something that applied to outdoor motorized events. We tried to do that. But if you want to change the language in Paragraph 3, you certainly can do that to be broader than it is now, than it is presented in this. But that also means that you're going to have potentially more things brought to you for approval and you, you as the county council, have to decide how many of these type of agreements you want to have come before you.
How many things probably, on unimproved property, how many times in a year would she come to us and say, I want to have an event on this unimproved property? I mean, we need to fit.
I don't want to steal somebody else's, I will attribute this to, I won't identify who said it, but there's a gentleman in this room who said that the, you know, perhaps they could propose to have a nudist event on the site. This wouldn't prevent that. You know, there are, you know, I don't know what could be suggested to be out there. What we know is that there was a motorized event that was proposed. Could somebody decide they want to have the Rolling Stones come in and have an event out there? Sure. And this wouldn't prevent that.
Well, we see where things have gone over the last year. I'm trying to prevent anything from happening on any county-owned property.
I mean, the, one alternative is that you basically say, any leases, agreements, whatever, have to be brought to the county council for approval, but the county enters in.
On unimproved property.
What describes unimproved?
There's not a building, there's not a, it's not the Civic Center, it's not.
Can you say that? An outdoor event? Would you be better off to say an outdoor event rather than?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would you be better off to say an outdoor event, rather than unimproved?
Yeah, 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 outdoor event.
Okay.
Hang on a second.
I had a question, if you don't, is it my turn?
Yes.
What if we made it so that, we made it so that any event outdoors, whatever, had to go, because there's a, there's a Parks and Rec Commission, and we have a whole commission. What if we made a requirement that it would have to go before the commission, and the commission would have to vote on it?
They're not elected, James. We're elected. We're the ones that end up catching the grief when something goes wrong.
Yeah, so that's a no?
Yeah.
Like I said, it was just an idea.
It was an idea, it was a good idea.
We just can't go through this again.
Well, we could find ourselves getting into a bit of an issue if we just do a blanket approach with outdoor, and Pam had suggested, well, what about Pemberton Park? I mean, they have a lot of outdoor events there. We would have to have built into this some type of a system where we create waivers or exemptions. That's what we're gonna have to think about, any type of waiver and exemptions, and take into account Pemberton Park, not so much the Shorebird Stadium, because that's not really an unimproved property. We know what that is, but I think with the help of administration, if we can get it, we would have to know honestly about what events, or Mr. Wilber, we would have to know what events they can anticipate that might cause a hiccup on this, because we might as well get it right.
Come to the table, Mr. Wilber.
And Pam, you can do it on the floor if you want, Pam.
There's short-term leases on Henry Parker, just all summer.
Right.
Do you want to have every one of those come in?
Right, that's why we have to make sure that we iron this out exactly to fit this county.
This is why I started with motorized outdoor events, because it's so broad if you want to get into some, and our problem with this particular issue is motorized outside events.
Well, I get it.
I would like to see us stick with that to begin with, and if we have something in the future, we have to come back and...
I mean, I'll vote for, I'll vote for it. I mean, I'll vote, you know, for the motorized events. I'm just trying to prevent something else happening.
Well, the question that comes to mind for me is, what is, what is the definition of unimproved? A park, technically, you know, you've got, Pemberton Park is a perfect example. Pemberton Park has a historical building, you know, two buildings on it, and the rest of it is unimproved land. So is, is, and we have lots of events out there, and we rent it out to people for weddings. And so you, so using the term unimproved may catch us in an area that you're not trying to catch. The, the motor vehicle legislation is very targeted, it is what it is, that is what is being proposed. It would catch this specific event. I will say, the comment on coming at the beginning of the fiscal year, that will not work. Our contract, the contracts at Rec, Parks, and Tourism for outdoor events are year-round, so those would have to come at intermittent times. So Bike Week is probably signed, it's been a while since I've been over there, but Bike Week is probably signed every year, December through February. So that would have to come to council, December through February. We couldn't wait till June, because it's already well past the point of being planned. So it would be a revolving thing for anything related to that.
These votes to approve or disapprove these events, would they require a public hearing? John?
Excuse me?
Bob?
Oh.
Would they require a public hearing?
Yeah, we do it.
To approve or disapprove?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Unless, I mean, this council could certainly have a public hearing if we felt it was necessary.
Correct.
But it would not necessarily, it wouldn't be required.
So we could approve them within a couple weeks, anything that came to us.
And Pam, regarding what you're saying, is that the Bike Week is in December, so well, the fact that you already know that Bike Week is in December, you could, you could put forward that exemption or that request in July or January, and you could put in a request for 10 events throughout the entire year, and we would say, okay, these are all great. They could even put them all on one list.
I guess the question, but that is not actually technically the lease at that point in time. You're limiting it, if I'm understanding the legislation, that you want to see the contract, the lease, the thing, those, the concepts we're aware of 10 months in advance, but the actual contract that has all the specifications does not happen that early. So again, the way the legislation is currently written, it has to come at the point in time it's ready to be signed, because you want to approve the contract, the lease, the agreement that, so just giving you a list back in July of the things that are coming up does not meet the definition of what you're proposing.
Well, you make a good point, but I don't think we need to see the lease. I think the council just wants to be aware of the event, so that we can, we can judge for ourselves whether or not we feel it'll be an intrusion on a neighborhood or any other type of faction within the county itself. Steve Miller comes in here and says, I have this, this, and this event, we don't necessarily need to see the lease, we just say...
I think the language needs to be updated to say that you don't...
With all due respect, Mr. President, I don't, I don't agree with that. Having said that, I think you're talking about agreements in the broadest sense that are done with the Parks and Rec, and they have a standardized agreement, my guess is. And there may be some minor variances, but they have a standardized agreement, and as long as they're using their standard agreement, I don't know that the council needs to see it. With all due respect to the Safari at the Quarry, I think the council would have wanted to see that agreement before they approved it, because with due respect, the agreement was terrible. And I don't think it would, whether the, whether the, whether the event would have gotten approved, I don't, I, as your attorney, I would have said to you, this agreement is terrible, and the agreement has to be modified before you can approve it. It would be my recommendation. Having said, but that's not, but the, you know, I think the Parks and Rec uses their standardized agreements.
For certain things, for something like Bike Week, there is a specific Bike Week agreement.
But it's the same one that they use year after year.
That's assuming you have the same company doing Bike Week every year.
It's a constant flow of contracts, and it doesn't stay constant.
You know, Bike Week, I've never been involved in it, but I've been involved in other motorized things that we use, sign contracts. Most of those people, when they come, say they come to the Shorebirds July 1st, we'll use that as a date, before they're leaving there, they're getting commitments from their vendors for the next year, so that contract most likely is done almost probably 10 or 11 months ahead of...
Not necessarily, no.
Unfortunately.
Many of these are just in time.
But they're getting commitments, is what I mean.
They might be getting commitments with the actual lease.
Or we think it's gonna be happening.
We think it's gonna be happening, but till it's actually signed, nothing is definitive. I mean, it has evolved.
If, pardon, if we're talking about Bike Week, you could exclude events held, outdoor events held at the Purdue Stadium.
I think what we could do here is...
That's a good, that's a good thought.
What I think we could do here is, I think we should have Steve Miller here, Joe, I think we should have another work session, bring Steve Miller in here, and let him tell us exactly, you know, what could be the best fashion of a legislative bill that wouldn't be too onerous for him to handle, and that way, we'll get a lot of feedback, because Steve is the one that knows exactly what the implication of this will be to the county, okay? Because he does it all. And I would like to try to stay with what Shane recommends, because I do agree with him, that this could be, it could be a ban, it doesn't necessarily have to be motor vehicles, it could be a ban, it could be a Woodstock at Conley Mill, right?
They tried to do that at...
Wouldn't mind it, but...
At Whalinga one time.
Sorry.
I mean, you're joking, but what we've had going on, I mean...
Oh, I know, I know.
So would that be okay, Joe?
No, I'm fine.
If we schedule the next work session, try to, I think, maybe incorporate the outdoor event as a whole, and ask Steve to share with us his thoughts on that. What do you think?
If...
You can come back, too.
I don't have to, whatever. But again, as you know, I lived that life over there. If you're using the word unimproved, you're going to have to be specific as to what you decide as what is unimproved. Because, again, events are held at Pemberton, and I would view Pemberton for the most part being unimproved. It is open parkland, and there is very little there, and we hold, you know, the Beer Fest there, we hold, we hold the Algonquin 24, the people who run 24 5Ks in 24 hours.
Sure.
I, you know...
Well, that's good input.
Not my cup of tea, but...
That's, that's great input, and again, we could possibly put in this legislative bill that, that events at Pemberton Park are excluded from this, or exempt from this.
Wait a minute, how about they wanted to have a Jeep event there? Think how much grief we would catch over that.
So...
I don't think you would.
I, I agree that Steve would be a, a good resource to bring, to discuss this.
Okay, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Yeah, okay.
We can put it on the next agenda. All right, wonderful, thank you, Pam, thank you, Paul, appreciate it.
For the record, Bike Week is September 11th through 15th this year.
Is that right?
Yeah. I'm just letting you know.
All right, I think we're gonna have to, I think we're at that point...
Are we?
Where we may have to kick everybody out.
Yep.
We are...
It's good seeing everybody.
All right, yeah, we're getting ready to go into closed session. We appreciate everybody, again, being here tonight. Thank you so much for your input.
Thank you all.
And your participation.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thanks.